Welcome to the April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three Selectman Meeting. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public announcements, Mr. Haggerty.
Mr. Chairman, you always know I have public announcements to give for the residents.
I always do, and that's why I always go to you first.
All right, thank you.
Get the best first.
All right, aw shucks, thank you. I just want to give a huge shout out to all the Abington residents who came out to last Monday's town meeting and participated in the annual town meeting. We were able to pass the FY twenty-four budget and so many other great things. So, thank you to all the residents and look forward to even bigger showing in the special town meeting in the fall. Before I give my big public announcement, the first one is, there will be a, just a reminder that there will be a townwide yard sale on Saturday, April fifteenth, from eight AM to three PM. It will start at the North School. This is something that Abington celebrates, is putting on together, and you'll see the lawn signs going up, so really, really cool. It's in an effort to raise some funds for the Founder's Day celebrations and the fireworks. And lastly, let me get it right here, friendly reminder to Abington voters that the annual town election is coming up on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, from eight AM to six PM at the Beaver Brook Elementary School. In keeping with tradition, the Abington Republican Town Committee is hosting their annual Candidates Forum on Wednesday, next Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM, here at the Town Hall, here in the Carter Room, for all candidates for office in the upcoming town election. The forum is an opportunity for local candidates to share their experiences, visions for the future, and answer questions on issues facing Abington. I have been granted the privilege to moderate the forum, so I'm really excited about that. It's gonna be a great forum. All candidates have been invited to participate, and I'm excited to announce that voters will hear from all Selectmen, School Committee, Planning Board, Board of Health candidates, and more. The Abington nineteenth, oh, I'm sorry, but the April nineteenth, excuse me, the April nineteenth forum will be recorded by Abington Cam in front of a live audience, and all residents, voters, and supporters of candidates are welcome to attend. Questions for candidates can be submitted in advance by emailing abingtonrtc@gmail.com. Again, abingtonrtc@gmail.com. And also, you can also submit questions at the forum as well. Questions must be Abington-related and relevant to the office pursuant, da-da-da-da-da. Politically motivated, personal, and/or inflammatory questions are not allowed. Local politics is nonpartisan. Thank you to all the local candidates for stepping up to run and represent Abington. We look forward to hearing from you. And just a final reminder, the Abington's RTC Forum will be Wednesday, April nineteenth, at seven PM in the Town Hall. Good luck to all the candidates. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tim?
Also, in regards to the upcoming election, absentee ballots for the annual town election Saturday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three are now available. If you're unable to attend the election, you may request an absentee ballot or vote early. Please provide an application or a note with your signature requesting that a ballot be mailed to you. You can mail that to the Town Clerk, five hundred, Eric Glenowitz Way, Abington, Mass. zero-two-three-five-one. Post codes will not be sent for the annual town election. Post codes are only mailed for state, federal election. You can also get an application for an early ballot at the Secretary of State's website. The deadline to apply for an absentee or early ballot by mail is five PM on the fifth business day prior to the election, in this case, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions? You can call the Town Clerk at seven-eight-one-nine-eight-two-two-one-one-two. Thanks.
Mike?
Nothing.
I just want to take a minute to thank everyone who came out to support the Hug Foundation, hockey game versus the Boston Bruins alumni at Rockland Rink this past weekend. Thank you to all the local businesses that supported this event, Webster Timber Lane, Abington Ale House, Cape Cod Lumber, Glen Isle Point, Martin's Restaurant, Troopent Real Estate, and I know I'm missing some, but I'm sorry, but thank you to everyone that did support that. And if you were there, you heard Todd Angelie, the Bruins anthem singer, sing, and he rocked the house. It was unbelievable. So, we had a great time. It was a full house and raised a lot of money for the Hug Foundation, so thank you to Abington and Rockland. Okay, so, any public comments, Mr. Moderator? Are you just here just to... Okay. And it is six-thirty-five, so we have a request for a new all-alcohol common vehicle license and entertainment license for Maritime Services LLC, DBA, the Abington Depot one-on-one, Railroad Street, Matthew O'Connor Manager. Please come up to the podium.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Are we open the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public hearing is now open. So, welcome and congratulations on your business venture. Why don't you introduce yourselves and give us a little bit of information on what you're doing?
My name is Matthew O'Connor, and this is my wife, Michelle Small. We purchased the Abington Depot off of Kathy Small.
Kathy.
I mean, it's Kathy, yeah.
Oh, Donovan.
Oh, Donovan, that's my, I love his name. Oh, Donovan. And, you know, it's a new venture for me. Michelle's been in the restaurant industry for seventeen years. She actually worked at the Abington Depot. I've worked in restaurants over time, but I'm more of the mechanical side of the operation.
So, I worked with Kathy for a long time at the Abington Depot. When we went out for sale, we were really interested because it's an establishment we frequented quite a bit. We enjoyed the people that came in there and just the overall atmosphere, so we tried to keep it exactly, pretty much, as much as I can be Kathy, I want to try to keep it as it was. With some, obviously, we're doing a deep clean, doing small renovations, buying some new equipment, things like that, but overall, it'd be pretty much the same. We're keeping the menu similar, some changes, just a couple, on the menu, but everything else the same. A lot of the staff have contacted us to come back. Almost all of the bartenders and waitstaff are interested to come back. I think only two didn't want to. So, we're hoping, as soon as this goes through, it goes to the A-B-C-C, and we have a few more punchless items to get through and open the doors.
Great. No issues from the police chief?
No issues from the health department.
We talked to all of them. The health department said they would come in after, once this gets through. They all said they'd be after.
Okay, so, it was properly advertised. Any questions from the board?
Have either of you ever held a liquor license?
No.
No.
Are either of you tip-certified?
We both are.
Any other questions?
What's the target date for, to reopen?
We're hoping mid to late May, depending on how long the turnaround is in Boston.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant an all-liquor license to the Abington Depot, one-on-one Railroad Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Time being six-forty, we have a request for a livery license for one vehicle, Youssef Ramani, four East Battery Street. Could you like to come up to the podium, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm not sure, is this...
I don't know that it's necessarily a public hearing.
Yeah, it didn't have to be advertised, so, why don't you explain what you're doing, please? Okay?
Yeah, no, I have a little bit of English.
Okay.
Because I tried to do something. Now, my name is Youssef Ramani. Just I buy this home in September twenty-twenty-two. I move in here, it's a nice area, and I have a limo. Just I buy this limo just like month, last month, for the way in the job in the airport and the paper with the car and everything. Now, when I want to pick up the customer from the airport, by call or by company, I need permits from the Abington Town. That's mean we don't have any issue, any problem, anything for the parking under my car or anything. That's why I need this permission for I go to complete my application in the mass port person.
Okay, so you need the approval from us before mass port?
Yes.
Will approve it? I see. Anyone?
What's the address that you're parking the limo at?
Yeah, four East Battery Street.
Four East Battery? Plenty of room to park it?
Yeah, this is my home. I have the driveway, I have garage.
All right, he's got a picture here, too.
Oh, was it one of them?
Yeah.
Is that the limo, that car there?
That's my car.
And it looks like from, we got communication from Nancy that there's no issues from the building department or the treasurer or tax collector for the town.
Any other questions? Do we hear a motion?
Do you want a motion to close the hearing?
No, there isn't. This is not technically a public hearing.
Okay.
It's just a request before the Board of Selectmen that this did not have to be advertised like a liquor license.
Okay.
As a public hearing.
Do you need something from Major to...
I would entertain a motion to approve the license.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve a livery license for one vehicle, Youssef Ramani, four E, four East Battery Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All set? So, Nancy will do a letter or...
Yeah, Nancy. You can call her tomorrow.
I call her tomorrow.
Yep. Give her a call in the morning, yep.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Good luck. Motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-seventh?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Review of railroad grade crossing study report. Scott, you want to lead this?
Well, you guys, as you remember, we had the traffic engineers from Traffic Info end to do a presentation a while back. What we've received from them is sort of their final report with some recommendations. Within the final report, there really isn't much changed from, you know, what we had seen and what we had talked about at the, at the, at the meeting. But you'll see on the report that you do have, the pages thirteen through nineteen, do have the recommendations that they make on what to do with the different railroad grade crossings. So, they mentioned whether or not, you know, the standards have been met or not met and what they would recommend that the MBTA and Keolis does to get everything back up to the standard. And in many of these cases, it's, you know, it's just a matter of signage and painting, but there are a few that, you know, particularly the North Ave stop, where they would recommend that we do a little bit more as far as whether it might be a...
Quad gates.
Quad gates, or, you know, certainly make it, you know, remove any appearance of a crosswalk where there shouldn't be one. Maybe extend a guardrail to make it a little more difficult to cross over without going, you know, and go onto the tracks. But, you know, for the most part, like I said, it's signage, it's painting on the streets. It's, you know, I think it's my recommendation that if, you know, if this board is okay with it, that we send a letter from this board to the new head of the MBTA and say, "Look, you know, we've done this study, we've paid for our traffic engineer as a result of, you know, several incidents, and we'd like you to take a look at this and make the necessary changes." We do also have a few extra recommendations that, you know, I think we should put in there, which would be over on Summer Street.
Well, they do mention the gate.
They do, yeah.
So, what Scott and I had talked about, that we should probably ask for the moon, and hopefully then we could negotiate something, so possibly ask for quad gates everywhere, extension of the guardrail and fence on Birch and North Ave, and definitely want a gate at the sidewalk on Summer Street. And then, reach out to the new director and see what he says and start with that. They're not going to give us everything, but if we ask for everything, then they may say, "Well, we'll give you two sets of quad gates," and then we could say, "Yeah, well, we probably want that at Birch and North."
We certainly want to point out to them that, you know, that the Birch Street, North Street area there has, you know, some issues. It's obviously, you know, as we heard from the engineers, that it's the eleventh worst crossing in the Commonwealth out of all the two-hundred-and-seventy, two-hundred-and-eighty grade crossings. So, I think we want to make sure that we highlight that and bring it to their attention that, you know, we think that these anomalies have to be addressed and they shouldn't, the answer should not be, "Well, they meet or close to meeting a standard," because that standard obviously isn't working here.
We have thirty total incidents on this line, and eighteen of them, sixty percent happen in Abington, and ten of those, sixty percent, more than sixty percent, happen between North Ave and Birch Street. I think that's enough for them to at least take a look at it.
I think that's a good idea, that we reach out to the new MBTA General Manager.
Yeah.
I think that's good. If I could just make a recommendation, I think it would be, I think it would be important just as a government partner with us, that we also keep in the loop the state representative and Senator and State Senator on our recommendations to the MBTA.
I think they should be included, copied on the letter, absolutely.
Yeah.
Probably the only way that we're going to actually get that letter to where we want it to go.
Exactly. And that's the thing, and that's why I wanted to make sure that they were kept in.
I agree.
And we will copy the new state auditor because she's aware of this and she wants to help us any way we can. So, I think by putting their names on it, our state rep, our state senator, the state auditor. They may look at it quicker than just coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, exactly. Because, I mean, I know, I don't know if we've done that in the past, but that would, yeah, that's good. And from this study, I'm just reading here just for people watching at home, that, so they reviewed all the Abington crossings, and they presented to us that the biggest priority for us pushing for safety measures on the crossings are for North Ave and Birch Street, correct?
They did the study, and then they made recommendations on all of them, but I don't know that, I wouldn't characterize it as them saying, "You, you know, you should take care of this, this, and this first."
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think essentially, yeah, we asked them, and they did look at all of our grade crossings, and they made recommendations on all of them, and those ones obviously are the ones that are our highest priority because of the biggest...
As part of the study, just, I'm wondering, I thought something was done about this, but I know on Birch Street, there was, in the, in the study here, they were talking about the lack of lighting. Wasn't, was that something that we updated, though?
Yeah.
Didn't DPW do that? I know, I know Alex and I had sent something to Scott.
I think State Representative Allison Sullivan was the one that finally, was the one that was able to get that light turned on.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It was a new, it was a new light that was put in.
Okay.
By the power company, and Allison was, you know, the one who got them to finally do it, but perhaps it's not working.
Okay, so, could this be an additional one that they're talking about?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna, I'll talk to John Stone and see if they know whether the one that was installed is just not operating now, or...
All right.
Or if they, or if in fact, if it is operating, if they're looking for an additional light.
Yeah.
We'll get some clarification on that, yeah.
Could I also, could I make another recommendation as well, on top of this letter? I think it would be good if we brought in Representatives Sullivan, Almeida, and Senator Keenan in to, for us to have a dialogue with them and moving forward with the MBTA, Mass. dot, so we can, we can collaborate together.
If we did like a subcommittee so that we don't have to bring them into a meeting, they could, you can do a conference call or something during the day.
That's a good point, too.
Well, I think, my opinion would be to send it to, like, your recommendation to me was to send it to the new director.
Yeah.
And copy them, and start there. I mean, this director might reach out and say, "Yes, let's look at it," and...
Yeah, exactly.
You know, "Let's give him the shot."
Yeah, let's give them the opportunity. And it's a new administration, too. Let's give them the opportunity.
Yeah, so...
And here's the thing, man.
Since he started today, actually, I think we should at least reach out with the letter with what we would like to see. We don't get a response, then it's time to bring in our state rep and our state senator and...
I would, I would do them first. I would loop them, I would loop them in at the same time that we do them.
Oh, yes, we will.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, if we don't get a response from the MBTA, then we'll have them get on the MBTA. Yes.
Yeah, no, I just think that it would have them basically harping with us.
Yeah.
Right out of the gate. Because I know that was the problem in the past, that it was like, we've, we've tried to go to the state before. We've gone to the MBTA, and they're like, "Oh, we're not going to listen to the municipality," and that's what the state rep and senator are for.
Then maybe we can, we'll CC them on this letter, and we could send them a separate note, you know, "Please follow up on this," and if you can get something, yeah, we could do something like that.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
But I think we owe it to the new director to have a chance to maybe help us.
Exactly.
Where they didn't before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm guessing he's probably got a...
He's went on the...
A pile of... Could pile of...
We did find out from the auditor in our conference call on Friday is that the town of Beverly, of the town, is going through the same thing with some grade crossings as us, and they have a group up there that's trying to do the same thing. So, her opinion was, and she had five people from her office on this call.
Yeah.
Her opinion is that the MBTA is gonna stop listening to us.
Okay.
And she's going to be working on, she doesn't audit the money, she audits the policies, basically, stuff like that. And Rick Collins brought up a good point, there is no avenue for the town to appeal anything from the MBTA. If they say, "We meet the minimum standards," that's it. But there needs to be an avenue that we could appeal. Well, the minimum is not working, obviously.
Yeah.
We need more than the minimum, and that's one thing that the auditor's office is already working on.
Well, that's great. That's great to hear.
So...
What, you said it was Beverly?
Beverly, yeah.
Oh, all right. Because I know with North Ave, I was shocked that, like, number eleven in most, like, dangerous crossings. That's scary.
Which, and I think that as part of that conversation, it was noted that there's not even a mechanism for, I think they, they looked at the top twenty-five.
Yeah.
And they recently had rolled out the MBTA Capital Improvement Plan for the next fiscal year, and within that plan, there was nothing to address even the top twenty-five, most critical, and which were obviously, well, within, yeah. So, so that was, you know, kind of a disturbing little factoid that came out of the meeting that I think, you know, it's important, and I'm glad to see it's on somebody else's radar.
Yeah. So, Scott, we'll draft the letter.
Yeah, I'll draft it up, and I'll distribute it for everyone to look at.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. And, like I say every week, this is, the moment everyone waits for is the town managers' report. I know I do.
Just because, well, that means we're leaving.
Just for Tim, I made it brief. All right, so, I'm glad to say, town meeting was a success. We had no problem with attendance and reaching our required quorum of one-hundred-and-fifty. So, thank you to all the boards, the committees, the department heads, and the attendees. You know, your appreciation, your participation is greatly appreciated, and frankly, it's absolutely necessary. We wouldn't be able to do our work without you. But now the town meeting is over, it's time to start preparing for a special fall town meeting. So, at the end of July, I will most likely ask this board to open a special town meeting warrant for a meeting to be held in October. At this time, we know we have the Fire Department, DPW, Building Project Debt Exclusion Article. We expect an article or multiple articles for proposed zoning changes for the South Field Redevelopment Association. And I'm sure there'll be additional housekeeping articles that the town will insert, as well as citizen petition articles, should any be submitted. It's important to note that when the time comes, this is a special town meeting, and as such, any citizen petition articles will require one-hundred signatures of registered town voters to be valid and included on the warrant. We will obviously update our websites and get that information out in plenty in advance. I will then ask the board to close the warrant sometime, probably at the end of August. This will give the Planning Board and the Finance Committee at least three weeks into September to hold their hearings and meetings, and I will also ask for a special town election at the time, because as this will be a debt exclusion, it will require a ballot. So, we'll probably do the ballot two weeks after the actual, or a week or two weeks after the special town meeting.
So, just so everyone knows, we're talking about the fire station, DPW building, so that has to be approved at town meeting, and then it has to go to the ballot, correct?
You could go either way, but it does require both.
It requires both, right.
It requires a two-thirds approval at town meeting and a majority at a ballot.
Right.
Because it's a debt exclusion.
And you can do it either way, because Rockland just did it the opposite way. I personally prefer doing it at town meeting first to get the feel...
Well, I think it's important to have the debate and have the opportunity to...
Exactly, before you vote on it.
Let people ask the questions, so...
So, we're so close, Scott, will we risk losing money if it doesn't pass the town meeting? As far as setting up the election, that may never take place?
Yeah, it's quite possible, but you would, I mean, either way, if you did it before the election, you're still spending the money, too.
Well, what I'm saying, if we put it, if we didn't do it at all, if we didn't need to, if we put it further out than two weeks...
if we put it further out than two weeks.
There's a timeframe that we have to hold the election, I believe?
I don't, no, I didn't see that. I can look at that, but I don't believe there is. I think we could hold it off, but I think the, I think it's important to have the town meeting, have the debate, have the discussion. And while it's still fresh, have that ballot vote. And I can get you the numbers, but my guess is it's probably, you know, $4,000 or $5,000 expense. I don't know that it'd be much more than that. Certainly, you could wait, but...
Let's, let's say it didn't pass at town, at special town meeting. Could we still do it at the ballot box and then try to do it again at annual town meeting? And, or would that be too far away?
Um, I would ask council if we could do that. You maybe could do it. It sounds like it's, it's an end run and I don't know. I think if, I think if we find that we don't get a two-thirds vote at town meeting, then we need to...
Reassess.
Yeah, I think we need to look at what's going on and what we're doing and find out why we didn't get that vote. What is, what is it that we have to, you know, redo?
Make the changes if we had to and bring it back in the spring, maybe.
Yeah, and I had, you know, some discussions earlier looking at, you know, it's currently a $58 million price tag, which I think could probably, you know, would be in the language of the ballot that, you know, 58 million plus principal and interest. So if you're going to be that specific on the ballot, but if it didn't pass town meeting, we probably, it's probably because of the cost. So I think that we'd be looking at redoing the ballot anyways.
Okay.
But again, you know, this is, I'm putting it out there now. There's plenty of time for discussion. I do think that we'll have, you know, sit down with the moderator and town council and others before we actually come down with the actual dates on, on what we're doing. But that's probably the timeline. I think the SRA, the Southfield Redevelopment, is going to be looking to come in and do some zoning changes right around that time. And I know that I talked to Andrew, the finance director, and he was also looking at that would be, you know, mid-October would be an opportune time, especially if we found that the, that the state budget comes in better than what has been proposed by the governor. So it would give us an opportunity to allocate any additional funds, too. So some other projects that will be getting underway now that the annual town meeting is over include the North and Center School disposition. So I have a meeting with the consultant on the 21st. We will be discussing a meeting with several developers to discuss some different development scenarios that will make the project economically attractive and viable for the developers while still meeting the needs, goals, and requirements of the community. Additionally, the finance team and I will be getting back to work on our financial policies. I wanted to make note that we do currently have some very comprehensive policies in place. We're not without policies. The goal is just to introduce some new updated policies with current best management practices that will provide fiscally responsible set of guidelines for the finance team and the finance committee to work with them. As promised at the annual town meeting, the goal is to have these policies in front of this board for final approval by the end of the fiscal year.
We're holding you to that.
We'll see.
Don't make me come back.
Mike, you're always welcome back.
It could be your read my lips moment where it all went down.
I said I'd have them. I didn't tell you to prove them.
Is there anything else, gentlemen?
I would like to make a motion. Will you adjourn this meeting?
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.